We'll start the city council meeting for March eighth, twenty twenty two, seven oh three P M. We'll start by doing the pledge of allegiance so everybody can rise if they can and go to their head here.
The United States of America and to the Republic or British States, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start by council members, President would be Mary Bailey.
Here.
Molly Ryan.
Here.
And Roger Gorn here. We have an open seat on the council, Mayor Duck Henke is here. City Administrator Mark Bolson, City Attorney Scott Riggs. City Engineer for tonight would be our old friend and pal Joe Wright. And we have our Chief of Police here, Dr. Shobram, and Deputy Brian Holmeyer. City Administrator Assistant Holly. And Finance Clerk Kathy besides the newspapers here. And we do also have Public Works Director Wayne Eric here. I think we've pretty well covered everybody. Is there any citizens comments that we will take at this particular time? I gather there is not any citizens comment, so we will pass on that. Item number three on is job, adopt the agenda. And I believe there is something added to that.
So we have to add appointment to K M U Commission.
Okay.
So if you want to do that right after appoint city council person. Which should be resolution twenty two ten, so right after that. Appointment to K M U. Under Old Business.
That would be item C there.
Uh, be item B, well. Actually, I think you should make that be and then make the resolution twenty two oh nine.
Okay, we can do that. You want to do it for label that as B or as C?
B. The appointment B and then C would be the polling place resolution.
And Mark, I just had a gal come in and I don't believe this is new business or if you want to add this to the agenda. It's not really anything, it's just kind of a new recycling thing we did happen.
Okay.
So I don't know, I just brought it because she just dropped it off and I just put it off. Like I think for plastic.
Okay, so what if we put it on the agenda for April?
Yeah.
As a regular, I mean, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
But we'll just put it on under new business just for information.
Yeah, it's just information.
Yeah.
That's all it is, just so.
Yeah, that would.
Okay.
Good way to do it, okay. But that's all I have.
Okay, that's on the agenda. That would be at there, so. Is there any other questions on that?
I'll move that we approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, second, you approve. The adapted agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes. Close, eyes passed. Okay. We can go on to number four is a consent agenda. And we could do approval minutes and appointments at the same time along with financial. Any questions on that?
I'll move approval to consent agenda.
Second to approval and consent agenda, approval of minutes and appointments and also our financial. You know, so as a favor of it. Go by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes. Okay. Next one will be presentations of public hearings, recognition, confirmations, and we do have one here for. Okay, we have one for the school bus. School bus days and that, and we do have somebody here. For accepting a certificate. And that is Lauren Ford, if you like to go forward, Lauren, or proceed that.
Just thanks for this, thanks for the support from the city and sorry, didn't get it to you sooner.
Well, it's all good. We had it for a little while.
Yeah, but I had, my wife had health issues.
Oh, no. Well, so good.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hard work.
With that, I'm gonna have to talk up because I have my own contravention, yeah.
I used to do that yesterday when I talked to you, so. I told you ten after quarter after, so.
Yeah, a little better. Thanks, Luke.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, we'll go on to engineering and we have a special person tonight, Joe. It's nice to hear from you and we're glad to hear you speak.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was glad that somebody thinks I'm special, so. I appreciate being here with you this evening, it's, it's nice to have an excuse to come back down and, and visit with you tonight. Your regular city engineer Derek is out of town this week, so he asked me to pinch hit and fill in for him, which I am more than happy to do. Um, I told him, take it easy on me though, so we do have a very light engineering agenda tonight. Just an update on one of the projects that we're working on for you. As you're probably familiar, we've been looking at the sanitary sewer. System on Pearl Creek, the line that runs down by the creek. And also on Forest Street between Third Street and Eighth Street. Back in January, you authorized us to do. Put together an R F P for televising and cleaning those lines and doing some research for survey. And then in February, you expanded our authorization to have us actually go out there and start doing topographic survey and legal survey out on the site. And then also to start looking at preliminary design and potential options of lining the pipe versus replacing the pipe. We did advertise for quotes, we, where we prepared the quote package, sent that out to try and get quotes, they were due back last week of February. Unfortunately, only one quote came in. And so after reviewing it with the administrator, we decided that we would try again to, you know. Reach out to some more contractors, see if we can get two or hopefully three quotes that we could bring back to you for comparison and review. So those are on target to be on your agenda for April. So really tonight, all we've got is the update that's in your packet, basically says that. We, I did just explain, we got one quote, so we're trying to get more quotes to bring to you in April for review. Most of the topographic survey, which is serving the physical features of the sites, you know, that where the trees located, the, the surface elevations, those types of things. Most of that survey work is complete, the boundary work will be getting to after the topo work. We'd like the conditions, the snow to go a little more, so then we have an easier time finding the property irons when we're looking for tying out the property corners or such things. So we'll get most of that boundary work will be done in the spring. Uh, so really with that, that's an update on where that project is currently situated. So I would be glad to try and answer any questions you have, otherwise I think I've stretched this item out probably as. One of my short reports.
I do have a question is. And probably with only one coming in on a bid, is there any particular reason, is there that much work out there? Or sometimes it's contractors are not into it or what?
Yeah, I know, I'm talking with Derek last week, he called a couple of contractors and some said they, you know, with that work down in along the creek, it's not as accessible, so. Using specialized equipment is going to be easier and more cost effective and some of them just don't have the equipment to do that type of line, you know, for the access that they need. So in summer busy. But I, I do know that we did get a second quote came in just last Friday, so we do have two quotes now for sure. And we're hoping to get a third one in yet, um, so we can bring that to you in April.
So we'll bring that in next month then?
Yeah, yep, so we do have two, what?
Are they from local area or from a greater distance or what?
No, they're both from, as far as I know. Actually did bring copies with me. Yeah, I haven't seen the third one yet, I know you said the third one came in, but I haven't seen.
Oh, you got a third one too?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've got one, uh, the first one that we received was from Chaska, second one was from North Mankato. Okay, and I'm not sure who the third one is, I haven't seen that one yet.
The second one was lower than the first one.
Yeah.
Oh, that's very, yeah.
Yeah.
It is a little better.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so optimistic you'll have viable option.
Okay.
When we bring back the results of the quotes in April.
Joe, is it fine waiting until April for these quotes or do we need to get moving sooner or?
No, I, you know, I, I think timing wise, April's still fine.
Yeah.
Shock B.
Uh, any more questions from the council for city engineer? Okay, if not, we will move on. What happened here to my? I followed off here, okay, is there anything else on engineering that you have on comments, okay? Yeah, I lost it here for a second. This one, and then we go, there we go. Okay, we may as well move on to legal attorney Scott Riggs, your turn.
Yep, no, thank you, Mayor, I will try to keep it short like Joe because the engineer can do that, he can answer it again. The idea of A B and C and the legal are all interconnected and probably the easiest thing to do is to go to page twelve of your packet. Which is the depiction of showing the really what's going on here. That's the depiction showing lot, lot split initially, which is resolution two thousand twenty two oh six, so A and E. Parcel, parcel, and then resolution two thousand twenty three dash seven combines B with the southern parcel. And resolution two thousand twenty three dash eight. Resolution to prove the lot split and the two nominations and.
So this is located just south of Home Street. Excuse me, the intersection of Home Street and Highway fifty six, so. And so basically Torres wants to buy this, the north half of. The parcel that Kurt Heiner currently owns. In order to have enough width to put in a garage. Okay, so what happens is when that, that is combined, you know, split and then combined. It leaves Kurt down here with kind of a, a smaller piece than the minimum lot size for the R two zone. Or the commercial zone in that case, so he needs to combine those lots to the south in order to have basically a buildable lot there if he ever decides to sell that. Or whatever, because I don't want to say he's going to build on it, but. So basically the, the split creates another problem which needs to be rectified, luckily he's got another parcel to the west that he can combine with. So it's sort of all tied together. And needs to be approved because otherwise it's going to create substandard lots that don't meet the zoning, which.
Technically it wouldn't really improve unless you were intending to approve all these resolutions.
Yeah, they're all really tied together, so.
So in like, if, so that, I have to look at the one with, that's in reality, because. So, so he's this Heiner, he owns the one. So right next to his, I mean, I see where Julie, so she just, she wants, you know, so that be lot or whatever.
Like you see where the, the hand is here.
Yes, that's him.
Okay, so he owns these two and then right now, this lot down here also goes up here.
Right.
So what the lot split's going to do is split the lot right there. And then the triangular piece of the north will be combined with the Torres lot west of it.
Okay.
Once that's done, it's going to create this piece here that is substandard.
But it goes with the other one.
With, or combined with the other one, right, to make a legal size.
But he owns them both.
He does.
Oh.
So luckily, that works out really good that way.
Right.
Yeah, because otherwise.
You'd have a problem maybe.
I think, yeah, you would be able to do it.
Actually, the, the proposed. Plan here looks very straightforward.
Yeah, it is.
They look like two very nice lots.
Actually, it clearly cleans things up.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does look nicer, actually, you're right.
So do we have to approve them each step?
Yeah. You can do like each just in, in your, they are.
Oh. Yeah. Okay, is there any more discussion?
I'll make a motion, oh.
No, I'm just asking, is there any more, you get to say the word, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty two dash oh six, approving minor.
Okay. We will second that then.
Second.
Okay. All of those in favor of it, say aye.
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 Aye, 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 pass. And go on to item B, lot combination.
And so we just have to make a motion for the lot combination for Kirk Heiner. I will make a motion for that lot combination. I'll second.
I'm going to give the, the lot resolution twenty two, twenty.
Twenty twenty two dash seven.
Yeah. Make it legal on that part, okay, any other question on it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second on it?
She, she made the motion, I second.
Okay, I'm sorry. All in favor of resolution twenty twenty two dash oh seven, say aye please?
Aye.
Aye, pass.
And I'm, I'll make a motion again for resolution twenty twenty two dash oh eight approving the lot combination for Torres.
Okay.
I'll second it again.
Okay, ladies. Resolution twenty twenty two dash oh eight, all of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
My eyes pass. Okay, then we can go on to item D. It's on sale, liquor license renewal for Kenyon Country Club. From what I gather, that's all. Been in the past, is that correct? Okay.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Very good. Motion been made and second then on, on sale liquor license renewal for the Kenyon Country Club, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 pass, so, did that, that's good. Okay, is there anything else that you have attorney Riggs?
Yeah, one item left, we have the approval of the women's use agreement for US pillows, and that's on the agenda.
Oh, I don't have that on mine here, sorry about that, but it is.
And this is something you approve annually for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many.
Yeah, for a long time.
Yeah. And it's the same, basically the same agreement.
And we have.
We bumped it up a little bit, I put in.
Yeah. Um, the rate this year, you know, last year, Mayor, you brought up. You know, increase in the rate, so last year was increased to three fifty and this year. I guess recommendation is to increase to four hundred.
Yeah.
So that was kind of talked about last year.
Yep.
Yep.
Is that satisfied with you people, council members?
Yes.
I'll move approval of the twenty twenty two agreement with Luis Tellez and Taco Express.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and second on the lease agreement for twenty twenty two. For Taco Express, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 pass, okay. Okay, we can go on then, anything else that you have?
Nothing further, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we may go on to old business. First item on it is an appointment of a person to the city council. Mark.
The council interviewed two persons. For the vacancy. Um, it was table until the March council meeting. Um, and I included the. Email or letters of interest from both persons and so. I forwarded you guys the video of, so I don't know if you got it, hopefully got a chance to look at that or listen to it, even though you couldn't see the, from that work session.
You did?
For both of them, yes, I mean, I sent you a copy, like emailed as an attachment.
Okay.
M P three four, I can't talk, M P four video.
Did you send it to this, to this thing?
I probably sent to both of them, normally I send to both here. Emails, so.
It wouldn't be on here, I think it went to your.
Where's Rusty's post?
You think so?
Email.
Maybe.
Hopefully.
Probably like in my, I know, I have, I'm sorry, I have six hundred billion emails. I don't, I don't know though, because I, I plugged you in, you know, the other day, because sometimes I just do before this, you know? And I didn't see it, like, you know, I searched you.
Okay.
I don't know.
I'll have to go back and check my.
Yeah, that would be about three weeks ago though, right?
It'd still come up, because you come up, you know, from like two years, you come up, you know, because I was like, oh, just, you know, because I just double checked that you're sending me stuff. And then I was checking on E D A and stuff, so I like looked, but I didn't see that, see any of that. I don't know, well, I'll just double check when I get home on my other email.
Want to go on, Mark?
Yeah, well, anyway, so that's, that's about all I have, so the council table it for this, to this meeting, so. Now, I guess you're kind of discussing making a decision.
Okay. Council, if you have any questions on it or so, who do you feel that we should look at for appointment? Of the two.
Both good candidates.
I would agree.
You waiting on me?
I know. Well, I'll tell you what, anyway, I've looked at them both to be very honest about them, one of them I do know, one of them I do not know. With it, but I'm kind of feeling from the letters that were written. And presented to city administrator. Um, I'm looking at Kim Helgason. That's kind of what I. Have felt would be our best fit for the, fit for the city of Kenyon.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree with Dan, I think they're both good candidates, seem to be in it for the right reasons. And I, I would not be, I would have nothing against going with Kim, I think. Talking with her was very positive, I think her letter of interest, you know, definitely interest in our city. Has been a long time resident, so.
Agreed.
Mary, you wish to say so?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, I'll, someone here, so I don't know them very well, I just, I mean, just from their cover letters. I mean, she just had, you know, I mean, it doesn't matter so much, but she just had a lot.
Yeah.
More to say, you know?
And what you heard from the interviews.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so, um. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't know as much about him, I know more about her, just because I, I stalked.
Yeah.
Well, that's where we're going.
And I, and I couldn't stalk him, he had no social. It's true. Well, you do, I mean, like, if you're going for a job interview, people look at yours, I mean, if it's out there, it's out there, you know? So she's the only one I could find. So, and she seemed like wonderful, but I couldn't find anything on him, he, I mean, there's a bunch of hens out there and I don't think any of them matched who he really was.
Okay.
So I was like, oh, this guy's not on social media, not that, and that's probably okay too, that's not the worst thing, that he's not on social media, it's probably good, but. She's the only, I mean, from what I saw of her, she seemed like a wonderful person, but, you know.
Would you like us to give you a ladder to?
So, okay. Well, you know, I agree with what yous are all saying too, but I would like to really find more out for this John Nats, I believe is how you say it. And that I think there's some place that. That we can look at into the future of, of fitting him in and getting, getting him started into. Uh, city business is how I would like to, to approach it, at least give a, a door open, I don't know where, I don't know when. But I do think that we should give that opportunity along with anybody else. So.
I think when he came in for the conversation. Just his, just his interest in. Helping the city, doing what he can, I think that is definitely an individual that we would want to encourage.
Yes.
And welcome in, in some form, to become part of, of the city as well, so. But we have one position and two people who applied. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move resolution twenty twenty two dash ten, appointing Kim Helgason to the council.
And I'll second it.
That's different than what I've got even.
Or maybe I've got the wrong number.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think there is any.
Oh, you got a resolution twenty twenty two ten, pointing council member.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah.
I got old business. Okay, here we go, you even got it highlighted, I'm sorry, I'm working off of the one you gave me earlier this morning. Thank you, thank you, okay, now we can probably get our act together again. Okay, so there's been a motion made, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, motion has been made and second on resolution twenty twenty two dash ten. On appointing council member and that would be Kim Helgason. All of the, is there any other discussion on it before we go? There's not, all of those in favor of resolution twenty twenty two dash ten, appointing city council member Kim Helgason. Should we state it in there for the empty seat, vacated seat?
If the resolution does say that.
Okay, okay. Very good, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Eyes, I pass, okay? Now. We can go back to.
Appointment to K M U.
Yes, okay. Is there a resolution, I don't have that.
Oh, it's just a motion.
Uh, here's where we're at, a little bit giving. Think I'm right, and presenting it this way, I did talk to. Molly earlier. By voicemail, I gather, it was, that was it.
And text.
If she was interested in taking the seat that Tom Garth had on K M U. And her email back was, or text back was, yes, she was interested in it and she felt that it could fit into her work schedule also. And I do think that, that that would be a good position for her.
So I'm in favor of it, of course. I would like for the other council members to speak up. What's the?
Yes, I think that's wonderful, if she wants to take that on.
Now, Mary or Molly? And it is Mary, I know that too.
Mary, Molly, whatever.
Molly, I know the first one here that you will not be able to attend, which is next week.
Right, because I'm.
Because you're out of town and that's also a E D A meeting, so that's understandable.
Yeah.
With it, Mark, do you have anything else to say?
Oh, I think it's, I think it'd be great. Um, if you want to sink your teeth into something, that'll, that'll do it. Talk about complexity of running electric utility. Little different than, you know, like any other commission. And so it's, it's cool, I really like it. You know, being involved with two cities with electric utilities, I, I actually enjoy it, because it's a different, excuse me, it's a different thing than I normally deal with. And, you know, it's, I mean, totally different and complex and, you know, you could make it as complicated or not complicated as you want. But it's pretty cool, because you're talking about like cell energy kind of thing, except, you know, just in one little town, but.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's an important position.
And I'm assuming they have their meeting scheduled, just like we do every.
Yeah, they've been doing them the third Tuesday at two o'clock.
Two o'clock, yeah.
Every month.
Okay.
So.
That was my only question, just to make sure that I get on my schedule for work.
Yeah.
And when you once get on, I can tell you this much, you'll have enough of bedtime reading stories.
And it is interesting.
Like that all the time.
Yeah.
There's energy contracts and, you know, federal energy compliance and all these different things that you, you know, like I say, you can. Get into as little or as much as you want to. There's a conference in August. MMU way, which is up in this year's at breezy point, was really good, so it might be a good thing to go to this year. But anyway, yeah, it's it's good, and we're in a consortium called Compass. Central minute or central municipal power supply where we, basically, they coordinate all our buying of power. But, you know, again, they've got a lot of things, and, you know, so there's, I mean, it's it's pretty, pretty big deal.
Good. So then how long, Molly, will you be on that? Do you know? Did they tell you?
Well, it's just gonna run. I think it's just gonna run for a few term.
With the term, I figured that, okay.
There's been a council person on there since Toon Horse was mayor, and I think that might have been Nielsen. And so Mike Engle was on it for a long time, but it's a, people that serve on it, I think, really like enjoy it.
And then I'll be moved off of Park Board, and Kim will be moved on to Park.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up.
Oh, sorry, just.
So, you know, what I was thinking would be good is, and again, not knowing your schedule, but if you still want to stay involved with Park Board. And then Kim stays involved, you know, at least for a little while. And I know, like, on the side, you could help him be involved, just as a person.
Yep.
Anyway, but that would be, I think, what would be good.
Yeah, especially as we're starting to plan out Rosefest and stuff.
And I think once you're on Parks and Rec, you're like automatically always a volunteer for the rest of your life.
Got a lot of extra time. No, I I'm good with that, because I think we've got some good things going.
Yeah, I I.
So I would like to still be.
Like to stay there for a while.
Well, just a little bit, because I think there's just.
That's fine.
Yeah. Can use the help.
Well, I enjoyed my time on Park Board. I can tell you what, anyway, I learned a lot from the ladies. All of a sudden, they were doing their hairdos at one time, and the next time. Business again, Mark, you know what it's, you enjoy it every month.
I do, yes.
So it's fun. I gotta get back there myself once in a while.
Mark, Mark does do his hair.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Uh, do you need action on this, Mayor?
Yes, we're going to.
All gladly move to approve Molly Ryan to serve on the KMU.
Okay, I will second that.
Very good, thank you. So. We have Molly Ryan then for going back to KMU or the rest of her term. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, ayes pass. So Molly, you got yourself another job.
All right, piling them up.
You'll enjoy the the guys that are on. Do you know who is on the board?
I do. Well, I know a few of them, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Well, don't let the bad stuff rub off.
It's all good.
So, okay, now we have to go to resolution twenty twenty-two dash nine, reestablishing annual polling place. Which I don't think there's going to be much of a problem with that.
No, this is just a formality. We have to do it every year according to state law, and again, we've. You know, recommended, if that's the right word, the fire hall again does post the upcoming, you know, election in November.
Okay.
And make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, reestablishing your, reestablishing our annual polling place. I will second it.
Motion been made, second, resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, reestablishing an annual polling place. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass, okay. I don't think there's anything else under old business that I'm aware of. Now, we will continue on then with new business. And that will be review the quotes, the purchase of a mower, and we do have Public Works Superintendent Wayne Eric here. And Wayne, would you bring us up to date on some of the things that you?
From the big three local manufacturers. There's actually two from John here on there, one from. New supply chain issues, more is really unavailable. So the one John here, the original one sold before this meeting, so the second pole, which is way more expensive. Bigger. But that one's available. That's over budget. So then we have a Toro that has a build date of April twenty-fourth. It's within budget. It comes to that, was cheaper, but there's to be determined on a bill. So they don't know until it's sold, then it's still up in the air on when it's made.
So we could have a new mower, it just might arrive in November when it can go into the shed and sit.
So what was in the packet was just the lower John deer. I didn't put the other one in there, because it's too much. And I guess I was.
Uh, Wayne, the the Toros are a little more expensive. Do they hold their value for resale?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I would push the goal towards.
That's the one that's available now?
It does have a build date, which would fall in line, because typically we start going last week of April. So we're looking at probably having this right away in May. So we'd have a little more until this one arrives, I think.
There was a budget was set at five thousand dollars into the budget for it, and Taxler did come in with. Four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, so we're still within it. He does have the build date for it, that it will be available. With it. Everything on it, that particular part, at least we know that the machine will be here.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is quite important, Dan, when you're saying, you know, in November, when we're parking it, it doesn't do us any good. Trading is up there reasonable, and I mean, it's very close to Ace Hardware. I do feel that overall, looking at it and knowing the availability of it, I would go with the Toro. And we have had Toros here before.
Yeah.
You've had a number of them here before.
Yeah, yeah, we used to have them all the time.
Yeah. So this is something on.
It's local.
And then Traxlers could service it.
Yeah.
And when we go to replace it down the road, they they, we could resell it through them if we wanted to. I'll move that we go ahead with the Toro.
I second.
Okay. Motion has been made then, and second to go with the Taxler Power Equipment More. The total on that, that we're gonna be paying out will be then nine, four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, is that correct? Am I stating it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still within the budget, which is about twenty-five bucks left, so that sounds good.
Oh, and a koozie.
That might be what it costs the gas to go from. Works down to Traxler and back.
So, okay, there's motion been made and second then on going with the Taxler Power Equipment More. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I passes. Anything else that you have, Wayne, from Public Works, do you want to bring up?
I have nothing else on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't see anything, but I just wanted to give them the opportunity if there was something.
Well, it's not on the agenda, it's sort of like.
Okay, thank you. Very good. We'll go on to item B then. The Kenyan Police Department conducted ener- energy weapons policy number twenty. Chief Childman, would you wish to address?
Yeah. Never been taserers a couple months ago. All schools throughout departments throughout the state and. I don't know, like, and put together, revised it. Right now, we had nothing, no, we're kind of. Doing our guys and guidance myself. Excuse me, legal issues. From sports and state, unfortunately, due to. So. We put this in place and we had to review. Did you see the issues?
No, no, it would be updated for fine, so it's all good, yeah, it's. And Chief is correct, I mean, it's best to have a policy in place that will follow. Officers can follow, and it gives us guidance, so yeah, it is recommended.
So we just need to make a motion to approve policy number twenty. I make a motion to approve, approve policy number twenty. I will second it.
Hey, the motion been made. Kenyan Police Department conducted energy weapons policy number twenty. Uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass, okay. And we go on item C then. Kenyan Take Home Squad Car Policy Number Twenty-one. Do you wish to speak on that?
Sure, so, um, yeah, but this summer, we did have policy on, I'll just kind of talk to us about. But we can allow our officers to take us home, come around calls sometimes, or off, and who can, so, fortunately, we have. A lot of verification on our payment policy, so we decided to add a lettering up. They're kind enough to draft a policy for us, so. So we are gonna review it. You know, okay, back. Again, we we start with the take homes are, yeah, so we can say limits. And we're not available, so that would be your squad.
And haven't we, we've always done this, right? Haven't we? We've always let our officers?
Well, here within the city limits.
Just within the city limits? We've done that before?
Within the city limits, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, you know, right, okay, so this is just kind of a policy that you wrote up to kind of, like, before they just kind of did it, and now you're like, taking it all okay on paper? Yeah, okay, right, okay, cool. Sure.
Bernie Riggs, I gather you have everything okay with you, too?
We we remuted, helped the chief put it together, that's what the draft gave for you, and again, I'll state it again, best to have it in written form.
So this is just a draft, though, because there's no policy number?
It's twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one hundred series and two hundred series policies, and you want to explain that?
Um, so. One of my biggest projects that I've been working on, putting the policy book together, we have mandated policies from the full board. And so those have been in place here, so we.
Sure.
Right lungs, that type of thing, just reliability coverage.
Just don't bring them all to one meeting. We like this, like a couple of them at a time, yeah.
We could technically expand the city limits out. You know, cover it all.
This conversation just went really wrong. Did you need a motion on policy number twenty-one?
Twenty-two fifteen, right? Policy two fifteen.
Policy two fifteen, I think.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, I will move approval of that.
I'll second it.
Okay, on Kenyan PD Take Home Squad Car Policy Twenty-one, is that it?
Policy two fifteen.
Yeah, sorry, I I said.
What was the number?
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen?
Yeah, there's one hundred series and two hundred series, so this is in the two hundred series.
Oh, okay, so we don't have the five behind, okay. All of those in favor of policy number two fifteen, favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, okay, ayes pass. Yes, that's it then for. For new business. We can go on then to other business, schedule of upcoming meetings. We have our EDA annual meeting, March the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two at nine AM. And that will be at Lacy's. Cocktail. And then we also have the KMU meeting Tuesday, March the fifteenth at two PM. And the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, April the twelfth at seven PM. Also, the Board of Appeal and Appeal and Equalization will be Thursday, April the fourteenth at five PM. That one usually goes pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah, so. Uh, that would be about it. I do have a couple of questions now, and our new council member, will she be?
Sworn in at the.
At the next meeting.
April, April meeting, yeah, and we'll work with her before that to try to do some orientation types of things as best we can. Shortened window here, but. Oh, okay. So we don't have to do it at a meeting?
Well, then we could do that so that she could also have an opportunity to come to the ADA, EDA meeting.
Okay.
You know, and get to know people if they wish.
A lot, a lot of people do it all in meetings, but the reality is, no, you can do it anytime in the office.
Okay. So, yeah, if you want to try to come in, you know, later this week or whatever, we could do that, and just have you sign the form and. That EDA, that EDA annual meeting is next Tuesday, so if there's any way you can make that, that's kind of like the strategic planning meeting, kind of for the city. So we we can talk about that.
Okay, well, then we can go on to council and staff general comments. I'm gonna start on this again, as we all know that Tom Garth, city council member. Is in pretty bad shape. He was admitted to hospice Monday. And there is a card here floating around someplace that I would like for all of the council members and department heads. And whomever, everybody to sign that. And we're going to take it down there tomorrow. There will be. Uh, Chief of Police, Mark, you're going, myself, anybody else is welcome to go to if they wish. And presented to him, he's in Rochester. I don't know exactly.
In Rochester.
Yeah. So certainly make sure you do, do sign the card before you leave today.
Can anyone go see him? Can you go, can anybody go see him?
Yeah.
Like any time or what? I mean, I don't know if I can get down there tomorrow, but I'd like to go.
Well, what she told me was, this was through his sister, Deanna, Deanna, that. They're doing some new medication. And he is droppy somewhat and doesn't always understand, you know, drifts off to sleep.
So maybe contact her.
And he is having somewhat of a difficult time speaking, so he says you'd probably, a lot of it will be by knowledge, only just nodding over the head and so forth. So I just think this is something that is going to help perk him up a little bit. He's. I just think this is something that is gonna help perk him up a little bit. He's always been, you know, spitfire when it comes to being, uh, at the head of the board of doing something. So I think this is our way of, of, uh, returning something to him, so I've, uh, said that I wanted to, uh, do. Uh, do you wish to follow in on it, Mark? We'll just go on around this way.
Um, as far as general comments?
Yeah.
Um, also, just our prayers to, um, Nielsen family.
Um, yeah.
Richard, former councilman, passed away a couple weeks ago, um, is that?
Yeah.
Very, I don't know if you did.
Well, yeah. There's nothing, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it was just recently, between, since the last meeting.
Yes, cuz I know you sense, but there's no. Um.
Yeah, which doesn't surprise.
Service of any kind or obituary or anything. So, I don't know.
Our prayers go out to his family, but that's all I have.
Joe, how about you?
Nothing, sir.
Very. And prayers for Tom, prayers to the Nielsen family.
Molly.
I will echo that thing else.
Okay, any other comments out in, uh, Molly or Holly? We always forget about you back there in the corner. So, anybody else have any comments that they wish to bring in?
Want to say that the, our squad's going in the graphics.
Okay, well, Kim, welcome aboard, and, um, Dan, we're outnumbered.
Fine with me.
So.
Sorry for stalking you, Kim.
We'll, we'll see how the shuffle goes, but I think you will wind up in the hot seat over here. So we're in between, so you can't get all the ladies together on that part of it, and, um, you're gonna ask a lot of questions. The two ladies that are on here, that come on, uh, this year, have a lot of questions to ask, which is good, because a lot of times what they ask, I wanna know, too. So, ask away. Any questions? Is any one of the department heads, um, are here to help you along to understand the workings of the city of Kenyon, so. Okay, if there's anything else, somebody else got anything else to say yet? Then we will, I'd make an adjournment. All of those in favor?
You have to make a motion? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I will second it.
Okay, what's been made and seconded adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, we're done.